All right, I'm with Chad Kroeger of Chad and JT. Going deep with Chad. Chad, along with his partner in crime JT, or a community activist, they're comedians. And they're full-time entrepreneurs, which is why I wanted to introduce my audience to them. You know, they're all about creating something for nothing, hustling, making it happen, doing lots of different things to create a brand, get their name out there. And I was inspired by them, and so I wanted to share that inspiration with others. So thank you, Chad, for taking the time.
Dude, thank you for having me. I'm stoked to be here.
Right on, me too. So you guys have done a lot. I mean, you're getting well-known for a variety of things, but you kind of started with the city council. Taking those two minutes that are afforded to anyone that wants to show up and using those two minutes or power along at each city council gives you, using a couple of minutes as a platform to talk about sometimes, you know, silly humorous things, sometimes more serious things. I'm just curious, like, what was the most awkward, uncomfortable, maybe even hostile city council experience? And what were you talking about? And then what was the reaction?
So I think the probably most uncomfortable city council was when we went to Delaware. We were called upon by the students of the University of Delaware because their house parties were being threatened by a new law. I believe the law was to, you know, they wanted to limit party size. I think any party over eight people, they said, was considered a super party. Yeah.
It depends on the eight people, right?
Right, exactly, exactly. Because in our world, that's just a kickback. So, you know, and they said, you know, you guys are the sort of the premier party spokesman. So we answered the call, flew out there. The Delaware City Council was not having it. They knew we were coming. They were-
They did? They had a heads up?
Yeah, I think this student body, they made it well-known, so they knew we were coming, and they tried to, they tried to smoke us out, basically. They made us wait till the end of the council meeting. So we got there at 7:00 PM. We got to speak at 1:30 AM.
No way.
Yeah, because they had a, they had a bunch of issues they were talking about. They were talking about like, you know, putting in like a new courtyard Marriott, and then they're talking about-
That sounds exciting.
It was actually really exciting. During that, I actually decided to speak on some of the issues because they were talking about, you know, building like a new, like basically like a shopping center. And I went up and I was like, well, if you guys are gonna do this, you need palm trees. I just believe in aesthetics, cool aesthetics.
And were they like getting more and more rankled? Like every time you get up, were they like, oh, God?
Oh, they were heated, yeah. And so we finally got up and they're, by law, they had to let us speak. So their attitude was like, all right, you guys can come up.
And they tried to bore you out. They did the whole like, let's just keep talking. This guy will leave.
Seriously.
You were, see, the thing is, you were on California time. You're like, dude, it's only 11 o'clock. Keep going. Like, I'm, I got a line.
Yeah, JT and I were just sitting there. We were like, dude, we can do this for as long as they want. They can't like, because the cause was too important to us, you know, we need to save house parties in Delaware. So we were ready to fight as long as needed for the student body. So, um, yeah, we finally got in there. And when we spoke, you know, they were not pleased, but we put out the video, got a good response, and I think we made some positive change.
So it's interesting. Do you have video of the other times when you got up to the mic? Because I think that would be even funnier, just to watch him go like-
I think we do, yeah. We never released it, but I think it is on-
That's the director's cut. You gotta put that out.
Yeah, I think that'll be some of the DVD extras on YouTube.
Perfect, perfect. So it's funny, because when I watch it, like, I mean, you guys are hilarious, but I love the reaction shots of the people.
Yeah.
Because you get, you know, it's like completely polar opposite, right? You get the ones that get it and are like, hey, thank you for injecting some levity into this horribly boring situation. And you get the like angry, how dare you, this is a, you know, this is a sacred place here. I don't know. I don't know what's going on in their head, but I love the reaction shots. Well, so you mentioned, you mentioned house parties, and you've been a house party advocate for a long time. But I think it's important for people watching us to understand, like, you've actually been a big proponent of wearing masks and being safe during, during the virus. In fact, I think it was yesterday or today, you put the Rage Safe video out. Tell folks a little bit about what was the story behind Rage Safe.
So Mayor of LA, Eric Arsetti, he basically put out this notice or this law, I guess, that was like, you know, if you're having huge parties, we're gonna shut off the water.
Eight or more, eight or more people.
A super party, yeah. And to be honest, like, we're all for house parties. We more or less agreed, you know, with the, you know, what he was trying to say. It's just like, if you're having huge parties, it's just gonna spread the virus. And I think that, you know, the biggest goal right now is just to stop the spread. So we were on board with that, but we were like, you know, on this day especially, which was three weeks ago now, is a huge day. It was hot, it was Friday afternoon, and the biggest thing was that Nickelback's new album just came out. So we were like, you know, people, they're like a tea kettle, you know, the steam gotta come out, you know, they gotta rage. So we're like, well, why don't we, you know, we've seen videos of people raging on balconies in like Europe and stuff. There's tons of balconies in LA. Why don't we just get in my truck, put some speakers in, we powered them with a generator, and just blast some tunes and rage for people so they can party and let it out on their balconies and stay safe. So we did it, and not to be braggy, but it was a huge success.
Yep. Yeah, I think, I mean, I thought it was funny. Again, you get the, you get the polar extreme reactions, right? You get people flipping you off. You woke up some old guy. He was all angry. And then you have other people that are like, you know, they're into it, right?
Right.
So Strider was in that. For folks that haven't watched podcasts, he's a regular visitor or regular participant in the crew. I gotta be honest with you. I got a confession to make. So I didn't, you know, I kind of jumped in episode like 50 or something, right? I didn't, so I didn't know all the history, the context. And also, and Strider's sitting there, and I'm like, is he an actor? Like, what, who is this guy? And it was, it took me a while with him. But it's because, like, that's the power of him. He's super understated and dry. And then, so I finally got it. I kind of understood he, once I realized that you weren't interviewing him, like, oh, he's just like sitting there talking to you guys. What do you think he brings to that chemistry? I mean, I'm sure you guys have known him for a long time.
Yeah, I think, well, he's a part of our squad, but we sort of, to us, he's sort of like the voice of reason. Like, he's, I'd say he's the, out of all of us, he's probably has the most wisdom.
In a relative sense, right?
Right, right, yeah. And he's like, he's the most adult of any of us. Like, he's had a, you know, eight-year-long relationship with his girlfriend. He has a job. He works for LA. And he, and he has like no ego. He's just very, he's just a truly good guy. And I think, I think you're right, too. We sort of saw that with the audience. It's like, once people really start to understand him and start to get to know him, he's become one of the most beloved, you know, guests on our podcast by far. The most beloved on our podcast. And then just, you know, everyone just loves sort of his presence. So your sort of reaction seems to be similar to what most, how's it's been for most people.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, so give it a chance, folks. If you, if you're new to the podcast and Strider's on there, give him a few minutes. You know, you'll warm up to him without a doubt. So what comedy teams do you feel like you draw influence from, either like inspiration? Or I know you get compared to certain folks, but like, who do you, who do you like when you look back, either current or the past?
Comedians?
Yeah, but I'm thinking more like comedy teams, not just like soul comedians, because you guys have a team dynamic.
Right. Um, I loved Wayne's World growing up.
Yeah, yeah.
I always watched Wayne's World. Loved it. Love Bill and Ted.
Yep.
Who else is it? I mean-
Is Cheech and Chong too far back for you guys?
No, I watched Cheech and Chong. I dig Cheech and Chong. I also love like, you know, I sort of grew up on like, I'm not sure, I don't know if you'd call them a comedy team, but sort of like the Will Ferrell, Vince Vaughn, Owen Wilson, that squad, Todd Phillips, Adam McKay. Those, those are some of my favorite movies growing up, for sure. I remember I watched, I watched Old School the year it came out, the Todd Phillips movie with Will Ferrell. I watched that in the summer of like 2002. I watched that like every day of summer. It was so funny to me. I was still young in my mom.
I'm worried about you, man.
Thankfully, yes, yeah. Because I would just be quoting Old School to her nonstop, but yeah.
So in between, in between watching Old School, you're like this 14-year-old avid rear of Forbes, I'm sure. I'm sure you had a Forbes like under your arm, like, like attachment, right?
I was in finance, so I was getting into big biz.
What was your, what was your dream career at like 14? Like, what did you think you wanted to be?
I wanted to work for Billabong or for really Quicksilver. I wanted to make board shorts. I think I wanted to be a pro surfer, but I think I knew, I knew that wasn't really gonna be, I think that was the dream, but I knew that wasn't gonna be my path.
What's funny about surfing is at 14, you kind of know, like, most professions, you're like, I'm 14, like, who knows? It's like, I'm 14 and I can't do that. Like, I-
Right, yeah. And so I was already thinking, I'm like, how can I be in this world? How can I still surf? And my goal in life has always been to be able to wear vans for the rest of my life. And so I saw that path with working for surf clothing brand.
Yeah, so go from vans, and then if you've really made it, you can just wear, you know, flip-flops all the time, right?
Rainbow, yeah.
Slipper, slippers, right? You wear slippers. So you guys use a lot of abbreviations on your podcasts. It's almost like you need, if you're like as old as me, you need like a glossary sometimes to follow along. What is, what abbreviation that you feel like you own, like you came up with it, that you're most proud of? Like, you didn't hear it from anybody else, you, that is yours.
I'd say constitution. You know, when we started going to political events, I was, I was like, you know, I really, I started to really respect and admire the constitution. And I've never heard anyone abbreviate constitution before, but I thought it was necessary to, you know, just really sort of-
Do you have a trademark on that?
I should, I should. And that's a good idea, actually. I might start doing that. But yeah, constitution, I think that sort of makes it a little more accessible to the youth. And then I made up a word actually in college that sort of entered our world is jabow, which just means like stoked beyond all belief.
So how do you spell that?
J-A-B-W-O-W.
Jabow.
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 Jabow, okay, yeah. All right, good. Well, hopefully, you know, this video is gonna be viewed millions of times. It'll, it'll just help propel that word.
That's the dream.
Webster's. It's gonna be in Webster's.
Yeah.
So when you, you guys, I think you do a great preparation on your podcasts. I mean, you certainly know those, the folks inside now. Who was the hardest person, who's the hardest guest you've had so far, as far as, you know, getting ready for them or doing the research?
I think I was most nervous about Laird Hamilton.
Yeah, Lord Laird.
Yeah, because he's such a, he's like a Greek god to me.
He was pretty mellow.
He's super mellow. And I was, it was more, I put the pressure on myself too, because I was just like, I was like, he, I just felt like he can, he can sniff out weakness easily, if that makes sense. I want to be prepared. I want to be like respectful. And I think I wanted to impress him as well, because I, like, if you watch his documentaries, he's like the coolest guy.
Oh, yeah, he is. So, so I was just talking to Chad about some of your history, some of the things you guys have done in the past. We kind of trashed you, but you'll see that when you watch the video.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we gave Strider a lot of credit for all the success you guys have been having.
Oh, he's a genius.
But here's a semi-serious question. Sorry to hit you, you know, JT, right out of the blocks with this semi-serious question. But, so I know when I first started, you know, listening to you guys, I got, I got it. I got the humor. I got your inclusiveness. But I think some people, when they're, when they read the, you know, the two-line version, the two-sentence version, the bro culture kind of gets in the way, and, you know, there's so much toxic masculinity associated with a certain, you know, some people's definition of bro culture. So I love that you had Ashley Meares on, right? She's a sociologist and author. And I liked the way you guys discussed what bro means to you and what the bro culture means to you. So if you don't mind, sort of for my audience, just sharing a little bit, a little bit of that, you know, your definition of bro culture versus maybe what some of the general population thinks.
Yeah, um, it's interesting. I think, I think I was just lucky that I grew up in a place where everyone was a bro. So because 100% of the people I was surrounded by were basically bros, I got to see all different iterations of that, you know? And so I definitely think there is that, that toxic bro that people talk about, and it's in me and it was in my friends too, but, but to varying degrees. And I don't know, I think, like, this is kind of meandering, but my buddy, like Ferraro, I just worked, I just worked out with him on a, a couple of days ago. And he's like super jacked and handsome, and, and we did a CrossFit workout and he destroyed it. But then afterwards, we had like a really sensitive talk where he was vulnerable with me about some stuff that's going on in his life. And, and I guess that was the part that I always thought was kind of missing from the bro dialogue was like that, that even though bros at a glance aren't the most sympathetic characters, if you get to know them, a lot of them are actually pretty like complicated people and have a lot more going on than you would anticipate. So, yeah, I don't know. It's probably the same with every group of people too, where there's that, there's that kind of spread, you know what I mean? Where some people are the toxic version of whatever kind of archetype they are, and then some people are the sensitive version. And I think, I think we just think that it's interesting to highlight the sensitive side, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think pop culture picks up sometimes on the extremes, and so they've certainly picked up in movies and with some validity, right? Some bad behavior of the bros. I like the fact that you guys, it's not a gender thing. It's not an us versus them thing. It's not where the cool kids and everyone else sucks. It's, it's just about, like, I don't want words in your mouth, but I remember you saying something about, it's like the stoke. It's about the stoke. It's not about the gender or, you know, anything else about the person.
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of it's about, you know, like, we just love having a good time with everyone. And I think we sort of wanted to show sort of the world that we are, we do have bro-iness aspects to us. Like, we love to like, you know, surf or lift weights or, and party and stuff. But it's like, like JT was saying, we do have that sensitive side and sort of inherent sort of inclusiveness about us that is sort of missing in pop culture and movies. And so I guess we just wanted to sort of, yeah, just, just sort of emphasize that about ourselves. Like, there are, there are these sort of positive progressive bros out there in the world. And just sort of show them in their, in their new way, I guess.
And I think, and I think calling out bad behavior, right, for many.
Right.
It just helps, it helps the health, the health of the whole group when people are, you know, being a little douchey.
Yeah.
So I want to talk a little bit about, I know you guys have announced this, the Hulu project, the animated series, and then with the COVID, you know, I'm sure that's gotten in the way. What's the status of that project right now? And when do you guys think that's gonna be, you know, viewable? Like, what are you, are you working on it now? When do you think we'll be able to see it? And tell me, tell us anything you can about it. And some stuff's been written about it, but-
Yeah, I think we can't, so we're in development right now.
Okay.
For a pilot. I'm not sure how much detail we can really go into, but I think the basic, basic idea is that we're, me and JT, living in ancient Greece, and we have Greek gods for dads. And we're sort of like we are in real life, we're inherently progressive bros in this sort of chaotic world.
So is one of your dads like Laird?
Ideally. We thought Laird would be great.
Who gets, who gets to have Laird as the dad?
That's Chad, yeah.
All right, I'm looking forward to that. So it sounds like it's, we're still maybe some, some time off before that's gonna be-
Yeah, I mean, what do you think, JT?
What?
For like, when it's a-
When the animated show will be out?
Yeah.
It's hard to say, because like, we get like approval on the pilot in October, and then I've never been through this rigmarole before, so. But I think, I think it's definitely gonna be year plus. Yeah, unfortunately, television is a very slow-moving enterprise.
Yeah, totally. And especially now, because there's so many things in the queue that haven't been released.
Right.
Right, that would have been out. So now you got all these other things stacking up in front of your show. But anyway, congrats, congrats on that. I mean, that's gonna be fantastic, great exposure for you guys.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, and speaking of great exposure, you guys were on Ellen, right? I don't think that's your primary demo, probably not, right? Her audience. And you guys did a great job, by the way. It's hilarious. You confused her, confused her with the word stoke and, and, I'm kidding. But she's had a lot of hate thrown her way recently, right? I mean, it's, you know, it's been, it's been pretty widespread. You guys were on the show, like, what, what's your take on the vibe of the show? Like, you were actually there and you experienced it. What, what do you think?
I think we had a great time when we were there. You know, we could tell, like, everyone was really sweet to us, and they, they're, you know, really helped us to prepare for our segment and just sort of make sure we felt comfortable. And I think one thing we noticed is that you could tell it was a very well-oiled machine.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that, you know, is a, you know, a byproduct of sort of the stuff that's coming out. Or, but personally for us, I mean, what'd you say, JT? It was pretty positive all around.
Oh, yeah, it was great for us, yeah. I mean, but, but, you know, we were there for four hours.
Right, exactly.
And because you guys were there, they were on their best behavior, I'm sure.
Right. They were like, they knew, they knew our stoke wouldn't abide.
I didn't even think about that. There was like this huge overlay of stoke, so everybody was probably smiling and-
Yeah, the PAs asked us not to leave. He's like, please stay, please stay.
Don't leave. We need the stoke. So what about, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say Chad, Chad has a good perspective on why he'd like Ellen to retain the spot. And it has to do with the aesthetics of the show.
Oh, right, yeah. I was, I mean, my favorite thing about our appearance in the show was the lighting. Like, honestly, I don't think we've ever looked better. And so that's why I'd like to go back on, just because I want to get back in that lighting.
I think JT looks pretty good in this lighting.
Yeah.
Thank you, dude.
Like backlit, and he's got like a little, little scruff going down.
Oh, thank you. That's-
You gotta run, you gotta run with that, man.
Happy accident. Yeah, thank you.
Happy accident. So what about Howard Stern? You guys did the Howard Stern Show. You were there live. How did that feel?
Awesome.
Was Robin, was Robin there, or is she like in New York or something? How does that?
Yes, the first time we did it, we were in studio, Robin was there, and the way he has the studio set up, they're like, they're all kind of like disconnected because he likes to feel like, he likes to feel like the way the audience feels, where they, they're not all in the same. It's like, it's, the voices are coming from out the speaker, I think that's what he said. But it was, it was incredible. I mean, his charisma is out of this world. And like JT, after we did it, he was like, I don't know, do you want to go into detail about how he sort of made us feel?
Oh, yeah, well, he just like has like a pretty brilliant smile. And I think what he does is when he's interviewing you, he kind of like smiles big at you and makes hard eye contact while you're talking. And it kind of, and I think it's a really smart move by him, because it really encourages you to keep opening up and to keep going. He's really kind of a, in a positive way, coaxing you along and getting you to give as much as you can.
No, hey, lessons learned, right? You guys can take, I mean, he's been doing it forever, right? I used to listen to him in DC when he was on some local, local station there.
Oh, really?
He's, you know, he was hilarious then.
Yeah.
Amazing.
His studio has sort of like a rock and roll vibe to it, like, it's kind of like purple lighting, you know?
Yeah.
Bring you in. It felt like a roller coaster ride, because they sort of bring you in, and he's like, and he's there in person. And it's like to hear him like speaking into the microphone and watching him do it in person was like the most surreal.
Yep.
Thing, because his voice is so iconic, and you're just like, it felt like a dream kind of.
Well, I thought he treated, I thought he treated you guys, you know, with respect, and it was a great interview. You guys, of course, you guys, as usual, did a great job.
Thank you.
So, so I guess, two more questions. And one of them, you guys are deep thinkers, right? I mean, the name of your podcast brings that out, right? You guys go deep into thinking and other, other things too, probably. So when you think about your life legacy, so think about like, you guys are young, but think about you got some grandkids sitting around. And they're like, grandpa, what do you want them to remember of your legacy? Like, what would you want them to be impressed by or kind of like think their grandpa, ah, my grandpa did that? I'll give each of you guys a chance.
Let's see. Should I go first, JT?
Um, no, it's up to you, dog.
I think they'd, I'd want them to say, he made a lot of people happy. I think that, that sounds good. I think that making people happy and making them laugh and just sort of, being a sort of a voice of positive change for people in a lot of their lives and helping them to sort of take control and sort of, build their lives and build lives filled with stoke. I think that'd be, that's sort of what I think I'd like to accomplish with all this. And to be able to say that he never stopped wearing band shoes.
Yep, there you go.
Yeah.
Yes, similar. I think I'd like them to say that it helped people feel less alone. Like, helped a lot of people feel less alone is probably the big one.
And that's apt right now, right? A lot of people are feeling pretty isolated.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And you, when you talk to someone who feels that way, it's, it's pretty heartbreaking, you know? But, but I think you, you also realize pretty quickly that we have the tools to not feel that way, you know what I mean? And that a lot of it is just, I don't know, how we've been conditioned to think about ourselves or to feel, or just, or just, you know, what we're comfortable with sometimes, so.
Yep, yep. Well, it's interesting, if you go back and look at like AT&T advertisements from the 20s, they were, they were actually saying things like, in this time of isolation, call a friend, like, use the phone. They were trying to promote the phone, obviously, because it was a relatively new device. But it's interesting that even back then, people were looking for technology to help stay connected, but not spread the virus.
Right.
So I'd say the last, the probably the best question for last, because I want everybody to have to watch this whole dang thing, so they could learn this, learn the following. Will you guys be in the second half of season three of The Real Bros of Simi Valley? Will you, do you get a cameo or not?
I, yes, I don't know if I'm-
Are you allowed to say?
I think so. I'm a, I play, maybe not to give it to, I play a role in one of the last episodes. I sort of reprised the role. And I think the last episode or the second to last episode.
All right, so that gives people a reason to watch, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You guys had that one, you know, the one role where you were doing the, you were the officials of the skate, of the skating contest. That was hilarious. I could tell, like, I mean, I assume that, you know, it's like anything, they can only show like, you know, eight seconds of what you guys are doing. But I just pictured you there for like eight hours, like, you know, riffing and like tearing it up and coming up with some great stuff. And they're like, we could use like two of those.
Yeah, exactly.
But, you know, welcome to Hollywood, right?
Yeah, it's super fun, because they just give you the mic, and they're like, just do your thing, announce, announce the contest. And JT and I sort of feel like we were born for that in a sense.
Oh, totally. You guys were in full-on, full-on like character mode. It was perfect for you. You, like, I think you said, when you had Jimmy on your show, you were like, wow, that was a role I was born to play or something like that. Or maybe I just made that up, but I thought, I thought it was true.
Yeah, my favorite part of the year was growing up was when the X Games came on.
Yeah, yeah, totally.
Mountain Dew helmets, Taco Bell.
Oh, yeah.
McTwist. I mean, and then the announcers are probably the best part, so.
Yeah, totally. All right, guys, I totally appreciate your time. I know you're juggling all kinds of stuff. You guys are busy as hell. Your hot commodities in Hollywood right now, which is awesome. Hopefully, some of the folks that are, you know, regular Forrest readers had a chance to be introduced to what you guys are all about, got inspired by the fact that you're out there doing all these different things, and you're social activists trying to, you know, stop the pandemic and save the coral reefs and you're doing some good out there while you're also having a lot of fun. So thanks again for talking to me, and I look forward to be able to catch up with you guys again. So thanks again for talking to me and I look forward to be able to catch up with you guys again.
Yeah, thanks so much, John. Yeah, we appreciate you having us on.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, stay stoked.